I'd like to call the May 10, 2012, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Fryling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
First order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of April 9 and April 12, 2012. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the meeting minutes from April 9 and April 12, 2012.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
The next order of business is matters of special privilege, and we have two today. And the first is a chance for us to celebrate with one of our own. Fire Chief Dent, would you meet me, please, at the microphone? Chief Dent came to us not that long ago, and in the time, he's worked very hard, not only for the city, but also on his own college degree. And today, we have great to present to you. Chief Dent, thank you for all you do for the city, and thank you for working so hard to complete this above everything else you were doing for the city. So congratulations. I know you're proud of this, we're proud of you, I know your family's proud of you as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted to say again, as the mayor mentioned, it's been three years have gone by pretty quickly, but just again, thank the mayor and city council, Mr. Tuttle, for giving me the opportunity to be the fire chief in Williamsburg, and also the city's support, continued support of higher education, not only for me, but everybody else that continues to attend college. And one thing I tell my kids is, please don't be my age and still working on this, but so hopefully they'll take that to heart, but I'm really pleased to finally get here, and thanks again for all the support from the city.
Great. Thank you. The next matter of special privilege is our green business and residential challenge recognitions. And the city of Williamsburg sponsored its second friendly green challenge this past April to recognize and encourage the effort of city residents and businesses in making Williamsburg a greener community. After receiving a platinum award in the Virginia Municipal League Green Government Challenge, the green team, made up of employees from all departments, decided to create their own friendly community challenge. In fall 2010, they launched the first green business challenge, and in 2011, the first green residential challenge. We know there are many businesses and residents in the city who are committed to environmental sustainability. We want to acknowledge them for the time, effort, and resources they commit to reducing their carbon footprints, and hope to inspire others to do the same. The challenge requires residents to report activities they're currently doing in any or all of the following four areas: waste reduction, water conservation, energy conservation, and transportation. To qualify, businesses need to check off activities they're currently doing in seven areas: waste reduction, water conservation, energy conservation, transportation, recycling, sustainable investment, and general staff education. The category of sustainable investment is new to the business challenge and includes activities such as focusing on redevelopment and using geothermal or other green energy alternatives. What's clear, as we looked at the businesses as well as the residents, is that they're green because they commit their time, energy, and resources, and in many cases, their real creativity. They're making the decision to green their lives and their community, and we're grateful to them all. Honorees in the business challenge run the gamut from large businesses and institutions within the city, such as Colonial Williamsburg and William &amp; Mary, the Chamber and Tourism Alliance, to small and mid-sized businesses as well. And as the city that's won the first in its population category in the first year of the VML awards, we have a special affection for those small business owners who make a difference. We ask the businesses to share any creative ways they are greening their businesses, and I'd like to mention a few. Aromas, they changed their menus to decrease the need to reprint and now laminate forms as much as possible. They switched to reusable gift cards rather than paper gift certificates. And they recycle coffee grounds for local gardeners upon request, so any of you gardeners that need coffee grounds, that's the place to go. Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, their recycling center recycled more than 1,315 tons of various materials in the last year. They've made a real effort in electricity use, and essentially, their electrical use has been flat since 2009, and they have a number of current and future projects across the foundation that are green and new. Finally, With Candy &amp; Gourmet, who is a new green challenge honoree this year, they incorporated some of their best green improvements during the 2011 renovation. All-electrical HVAC was upgraded to ultra-efficient CF bulbs, sensors, thermostats, and timers. Congratulations to all the honorees, leaders in our community. At this time, I'll read the names of our green businesses to express our thanks, and the businesses are Williamsburg White House Inn, Aberdeen Barn, Aromas, Dr. Don Cherry, College of William &amp; Mary, Colonial Connections, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, Compass Wealth Strategies, Fife &amp; Drum Inn, Goodyear, Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, Rétros, Ripley's Believe It or Not, Subway High Street, the Virginia Gazette, Virginia Regional Ballet, Williamsburg Hospitality House, Williamsburg Manor, and the With Candy &amp; Gourmet. I'd like to also recognize our 59 green residential honorees. Six were randomly selected for prizes. The Waller Mill Package, a year-long admission pass and free boat rental at Waller Mill Park, goes to John and Elizabeth Hollis of Burns Lane. The following, we each receive a littered recycling bin with wheels filled with green items from our green businesses: Stuart Garden of Burns Lane, Grace McCardo of Highland Park, Paul &amp; Becky Overland of Skipworth Farms, Sarah Stafford of Capitol Heights, and Paul Scott of West Williamsburg. We have more information about our residents on the city website, WilliamsburgVA.gov/green, and I hope everyone will sign up for the city's ecograms or e-notifications about green news and issues. Thank you for everyone for participating, and for the members of the green team for continuing to lead the city's green efforts, so thank you very much. Earlier today, we had a number of the business recipients in to have their picture taken with their certificates, and again, we appreciate all the participation by both businesses and residents as we go forward. And this is just, stay tuned for next year, I'm sure the green team will have even more in store for us, so thank you. And Jody, thank all the members of the green team for us, we really appreciate that. Next order of business is public hearings, and we have none today, is that correct? That leads us to reports, and we have a number. The first, monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Just to point out, we're now 10 months through the fiscal year, and you'll notice, comparing where we were at the same point last year, we're about $200,000 ahead on revenue. Our spending at this point is about $900,000 ahead at the same point last year, but we're on target to meet budget and should surpass it. Also, you'll see the results, we always take a look at room, meals, and sales tax in particular, and 10 months through the year, we are almost now back up to even on the room tax, just slightly behind where we were last year because of the, and most of that is making up for the weakness last summer, and we're getting there, so we should end up this year ahead of last year with two more months of experience. Meal tax, however, for the year is 4.77 percent greater than the same period last year, and we're doing better on sales tax as well, at 1.57 percent. So that's a quick update on where we stand.
Great, thank you. Any questions for city manager?
I just think emphasizing a point about the difficulty we faced in July and August in being able to make up that ground in the time since may not be indicative necessarily of a trend that will last for the longer term, but it certainly is encouraging, because those were two particularly tough months which are normally top producers for the community and for the businesses as well.
Okay, thank you. Next is monthly department operating reports. Jack, anything in particular?
Nothing in particular.
Any questions on the operating reports? If not, we'll move to city manager reports, and there are three. The first is General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2012. This is proposed resolution 1205.
Right. Yes, this resolution would authorize the issuance and sale of refunding of 2005 general fund bonds in the balance, or the principal balance amount, of $5.1 million. Those bonds currently are outstanding at 3.76 percent, and we were approached by our financial advisor, Davenport &amp; Company, to let us know, as we talked about last month, there was an opportunity in the market today to, excuse me, to refund those bonds for under 2 percent. And if we're successful in doing that, that should generate a savings over the remaining period of this bond issue of about $250,000, about $30,000 a year in savings. So the resolution would authorize this refunding to go forward, and part of the package, you've seen the draft preliminary official statement, which gives all the details, both for investors and for anyone that wants to know the particulars of the issue. Next week, there'll be a conference call with the rating agencies, both at Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, to confirm the last rating we had on the last bond issue, and we hope to expect to get results that are similar to what we received last time. We should get those results in the following week, and then, at the end of the month, Davenport would be in a position to negotiate sale of the bonds, and they are acting as underwriter on this sale, so they would come back to us with a proposal to either go ahead or not go ahead at the interest rate they've been able to achieve in the marketplace. So this resolution, though, would authorize us to make that happen. Mr. Sanderson is here from Davenport &amp; Company, should you have any questions of him, and Mr. Sarah as well, be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments?
Maybe a question for Mr. Tuttle? The bond pricing on around May 29, Davenport negotiates with all potential buyers and ranges to sell the bonds. Closing on the refinancing is actually June 12.
Right.
Is May 29 the date at which, or on or about May 29 when these rates get locked in?
Yes, yes, that's when, at the time they negotiate that arrangement, and they'll come back to us and give us that pricing, if we say that's acceptable, then they will go ahead to closing.
And so then we would know that by our next council meeting?
Yeah, we will let you know that as soon as we do.
Thank you.
Scott?
This all sounds really good, is there any potential downside?
The only potential downside, if the rates come back, that we're not going to achieve the savings that we imagined, then what we have spent to date, and for instance, having the rating agents do that work, and for bond council, that money would be lost, but that's the only downside.
No questions? No. For $250,000, a risk worth taking, I'm sure.
Well, as an economist, can you tell us what will happen?
I'm not a magician.
I can tell you many things that might happen, and let you choose. I wish I could, but the trend in long-term rates is down, which is good.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that city council approve resolution 12-05 to authorize the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2012, for the purpose of refunding the city's general obligation bond, Series 2005.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you, Davenport, we appreciate your looking out for our interests, so thank you. The next order of business is the report on employee health insurance, Commonwealth of Virginia's Local Choice Health Benefit Program.
Mrs. Miller will give this report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. For the last 20 years, the city has provided a self-insured employee health insurance program administered by Anthem. Since FY 2005, the city has experienced substantial cost increases for the self-insured plan from $1 million in FY 05 to $1.9 million for FY 12, about a 90 percent increase, despite trying to curtailment of these benefits and trying to contain those costs. Cost increases have been driven by overall costs for medical care and the rate of use by city employees and their dependents. We have recently been notified by Anthem to anticipate a 16.9 percent increase for our current self-insured plan, estimating $2.2 million for the plan for fiscal year 2013. As you're aware, the proposed budget includes the city paying for 10 percent of any projected increases, leaving the remainder of that 6.9 percent to be paid by city employees based on that 16.9 percent increase. These escalating costs of our current plan have driven us to look for an alternative plan. We requested a quote from the Commonwealth of Virginia's Local Choice Health Benefits Program. As you're aware, the program was established in 1990 by the General Assembly and is currently administered by Anthem. The TLC program is a statewide self-funded program managed by the Virginia Department of Human Resource Management, and it provides a standardized approach for employee health care. The TLC program currently has 297 groups within the total program, about 30,000 employees within those groups, about 50,000 total members. The Williamsburg James City County School Division is the largest group within this There are key differences in the Local Choice program compared to our current health plan, and I'm going to highlight a few of the differences here. The Local Choice program provides only Key Care or PPO plans, there's no HMO option available to the city. The Local Choice program provides dental and vision insurance, prescription coverage, employee assistance programs as part of the overall program. The Local Choice program is a set program, as I mentioned, standardized, and does not allow for customization by group members. The Local Choice program medical insurance group is based on group size and the entire Local Choice pool, rather than just the city's experience. And it also includes prescription drug, EAP, and dental services. As I mentioned, those rates are based on pooling of the entire Local Choice program. Benefits to employees under the Local Choice program will change in several important ways, and here I've highlighted just a few. The Key Care PPO plans in the Local Choice program require deductibles for about 35 percent of the services. Our current plans do not require deductibles. The recommended plan is called the Key Advantage 250. Under this plan, the deductible would be $250 annually for a single participant and $500 annually for two or more. The prescription drug benefit copays are $10, $20, and $35. This is currently lower than our plan. A flat 20 percent employee cost share is proposed for the Key Advantage 250 plan. Currently, employees pay varying cost shares anywhere from 10 to 30 percent with our current plan. Because our current PPO and HMO plans do not match side for side with the Key Care 250 plan, we'll have a situation where some employees will see their premiums go up and some will see them go down. Given the different structures of the covered groups, as I mentioned, and not knowing how many employees would enroll in a new plan makes determining the precise number for savings for fiscal year difficult. We estimate that we will not need all of the $140,000 budgeted for health insurance for fiscal year 13. Ending the dental reimbursement would save $70,000 in the general fund as well. Together, we're estimating a savings of $120,000 below the proposed budget. Furthermore, membership in the larger Local Choice pool should further help us moderate those future increases in health insurance, and that's one of the things that we're hoping for for the future. The recommendation is that city council would authorize the city manager to execute all the documents required for the city to participate in the Commonwealth of Virginia's Local Choice Employee Health Insurance Plan for fiscal year 2013. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much, Jody. I'll turn to council for questions, comments.
Sure. Mrs. Miller, can, I don't know that you would know the answer to this, but I'm just curious why Local Choice does not offer an HMO option? Do they prefer to manage costs through the escalating deductible instead?
I don't know why they do not offer it to us. I know that they only offer HMO product in Northern Virginia and Maryland area, that they pre-negotiated, so for what we would be eligible for, they do not offer the HMO, and I don't know the specifics as to why.
So it is possible that that could be available in the future?
I guess it's possible, but at this point, they haven't given us any indication that that would be likely.
Obviously, not information we can get for this decision, but would it be possible to research that more and find out why the difference in the coverage based upon the different geography?
Sure.
I just think it'd be helpful for us to know, because if there are some things that we, as a community or as a city, could do, that would make the HMO option available and might help all around as well. The other question is, could you or the appropriate person maybe just say a few words about what the city is doing, aside from managing health care costs this way, but encouraging the city staff through health and wellness activities and behaviors and...
And that would be me probably the best person to answer that. Since January, we've had a very active health and wellness initiative going on at the city. We've actually been working on this for a whole year prior to that, where employees have really sort of taken it upon themselves to really think about and take seriously overall health and wellness, not only for themselves, but for their families as well. And we have a task force of employees from all across the city departments who've come together, who've committed themselves to certain activities and programs to really help us think about our current health and wellness, but also future health and wellness, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also as a way to help us think about better managing long-term costs for our health insurance. We focused on three particular areas since January. First, we have a very active walking club that we have about 65 members, 65 employees as part of. Employees walk in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening, they walk on their own, and we get them to track their walking as a way to stay active and think about their overall health. Since January, we've been having monthly educational seminars on different aspects of health, whether it's nutrition, we just had one actually earlier this week on stress management, all these kinds of things to start helping people better understand and learn more opportunities for their overall health and wellness. And the third part of this is sort of awareness piece, is sort of an overall education piece. We've tried to provide as many resources as possible to employees on health and wellness. We redesigned our health and wellness section on the city's Intranet site, which is available to all employees, to provide all different types of resources to them. We do a section and a monthly newsletter for employees that talks about specific health and wellness issues, whether it's a reminder of the next session that's coming up, or the walking club is having an activity, or just a did you know kind of information. We've also launched our first, and we're going to launch them quarterly now, an online magazine for employees. It's done by employees for employees to inspire and motivate employees to think about their overall health and wellness, and it's informative, it shares information for employees about their struggles and challenges. It's fun, it's interesting, and it kind of gives a neat way for us to stay connected and think about our overall health and wellness. So those are some of the things that we've been doing, in addition to the long list of things that the city has done for a number of years, whether it's provide gym equipment over at the fire station and the police station, to doing annual flu shots, and just a whole variety of different things the city has done for a long time.
I just want to thank the entire city staff for embracing this philosophy, because healthcare costs are going to be a burden on this country across the board. It's not just the city, it's not just the school system, it's throughout the public and private sector. And as with most challenges we face, prevention is so much more cost-effective than intervention, and this is hitting the issue on the front side, that changes not only the potential cost liability to any institution or company, but also enhances an individual's productivity over the long term. And I just think that there are huge long-term benefits in this, and I just thank you all for undertaking that, and I wish there was more we could do to spread the efforts to the greater community, because I think we could all benefit from more activities like this, so thank you.
Scott?
Based on our previous discussions, take the individual employee, really the effect from our current plan to the new plan largely depends on that person's familial situation and how they enroll in the plan?
Right. The way the new plan's structured is organized a little differently than our current plan, so based on that new structure, some employees who may fall in the family plan would now fall to the dual, some who are now, you know, dual may have been in the family, those kinds of things, so that reorganizing would impact what an employee would pay.
Got you. And is, what are our strategic options for balancing out those inequities from the old plan to the new plan? I mean, is there a lot on the, more than one thing on the table? I mean...
Well, I'll just jump in to say that the most common participation now is the HMO family coverage, and even though there is a sizable cost increase in going to the new program, it's not an increase over where those HMO employees would be if we stayed like it is now with this big increase coming on. So that major increase, health insurance rates for city employees are going to go up in next fiscal year, that's inescapable, and we believe, although this is painful for employees to take, to pay these additional costs, that we are better off for the long haul in this approach with pooling rates over a much larger group. We're at less risk, I should say it that way, of those costs continuing to increase at this kind of pace in the future. So as Jody mentioned, we have seen this occur year after year after year, and we're looking for ways to get out of that loop.
I hope that, I hope being in the larger pool insulates from that type of, you know, that type of jump year to year, so.
Thanks.
And I would just talk a little bit more about the pooling, because I do think that's largely one of the greatest benefits that this new program has, is that it allows for the ability of one incident amongst our city insured to affect the overall rate. Can you speak to what the rate escalation has been since 2005 in the Local Choice program? Has it not grown? Anthem went up 90 percent, has Local Choice been a little bit more flat?
Well, it depends. Remember, the medical insurance part of it, part of it's based on your group experience, and then part of it's based on the pool. I don't know the exact percentages, but I can tell you, when we met with the Local Choice people, it wasn't anywhere near the 16.9 percent, it was, you know, 5, 6, 7, 8 percent, and that depends on, you tend to be higher if your experience is higher.
Yeah, and I would add to that, because the school system is involved in this program, and they've had several years where they've not seen much of an increase, which with all the other things increasing in their budget, it's been very helpful not to see these costs go up anywhere near to this extent. So I can't go all the way back to 2005, I don't have those numbers precisely, but from what we've seen in the last few years, it's been, the increases have been much more moderate than what we've seen in our plan.
Sure. And it is, you know, unfortunate that expenses are going to go up for our employees, but they're going to go up regardless. I mean, the cost of health care is just going to continue to rise. Based on what I see in this program, it's still a very rich program compared to some other options out there. The deductible, for example, at a single is 250, you know, it could be higher, so, you know, we have done what we can to keep deductibles more manageable for, you know, for the employees, and I think, you know, that's a key factor.
Jody?
I will spare you my rant about health care in the United States, it should not have to go up every year, it is ridiculous that it goes up every year, but it's not our problem, it's the country's problem, so.
So much for sparing us.
Well, my rant goes on much longer than that.
One of the benefits of this program is that sort of dual membership. Under our current program, it's limited to an adult and one minor, whereas this moves it to one adult and one of any age, so that for individuals who were having to buy family insurance for themselves and an adult partner now can move back to the dual, and so there may be substantial savings for some in that.
Yes, and that's from the medical insurance side, that's what we're anticipating part of the savings coming from. The other part is because... The other part is because dental insurance is included as part of the whole package. We would be discontinuing our dental reimbursement programs, we would be seeing some savings for that as well.
And the savings this year is smaller than we might anticipate in future years, in part because we need to rebuild the contingency pool, correct?
Yes, yes.
Also, tell us a little bit about sort of how you've communicated this to employees, sort of what was that process, and what feedback you got during that process?
Right. Well, first, going back to January and February, we knew that next year's healthcare costs were going up. We've had enough experience, we didn't know precisely how much, but when we went out and I met with small groups of employees, averaging about groups of about 15 or so, and had 10 such meetings around the city, I put everyone on notice that we knew these costs were going up next year, and we also knew there wouldn't be any raises next year, as things were looking in the budget, as you well know. So, there's been some preparation on that. Doesn't make it much easier, but at least there's some advanced warning. As we continue to work on the plan of this, and we got the numbers in both for the Local Choice bid and the quote for the existing plan, then we had initially a meeting at the department head level with key staff in the departments and provided all of that information. And so, the department heads could take it back and meet with their employees. And then also, we put it on the, our city-side Intranet site, which is in a sense that in-city site where all information on employment and benefits is contained, so that every bit of information we had, we put it out there so employees would have access to it, and then been available to answer questions. Jackie Herman, our human resource specialist, has also gone around to individual departments and had individual meetings with groups of employees. So, that's what's occurred.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion. I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute all documents required for participation in the Commonwealth of Virginia's Local Choice Employee Health Insurance Plan in fiscal year 13.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye. And I must say, we really appreciate all the city staff in working with us and understanding sort of the nature of the issue we face and being flexible as we move forward. So, I think the city staff deserves a big hand here as well. So, thank you, Jack, and I hope you'll, you and Jody will convey that to staff people.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next city manager report is methods of conducting licensed tours, proposed ordinance 12-08.
Yes, sir. As to point out a few highlights in the memo that I sent you, and also going a little further, we received a request to operate a pedicab in the historic area under the tour guide ordinance. Now, it's not been uncommon to receive requests for, I've had rickshaws, I've had horse-drawn carriages, and pedicab. Folks come and wanting to operate up and down to Gloucester Street, but always in some form of a transport to move people from point A to point B. And under our existing ordinances that regulate commercial activity on city streets, those have been denied. This request was different in that it came in just under the tour guide ordinance, as we discussed and as you saw on Monday when this was discussed. Generally, just backing up a bit, the city's public purpose in regulating buying and selling on city streets, and especially in the historic area, is for a number of reasons, guarding public safety, of the use of public sidewalks and streets, but also protecting our millions of visitors that come to town or on those streets to visit Colonial Williamsburg, and protecting them from undue commercial solicitation while they're going about their day, and also just protecting the ambience of the historic area itself from as many 20th century, 21st century incursions and distractions as we can. So, those are just a few of the public purposes of why the city regulates activity on its streets. And the regulatory system involves a number of ordinances in the city code, involves our zoning code, our business license, and under that, there's an ordinance that deals with solicitation in the city, another ordinance which deals with tour guides, with special events. Also, there's a section on streets and sidewalks, what you can do with streets and sidewalks. There are taxi cab regulations, there's special regulations for the historic area. So, there's really a system of regulation that's found in the code, and so they all need to be consulted when these various ideas come up. And we do get a lot of different ideas, because it's, again, an attractive customer base that business people would like to access. So, we've had requests for all types of direct vendor sales of goods and services, for solicitation to take people to go to someone else, somewhere other location, and sell something, we've dealt with, and as already mentioned, with transport by carriage, or rickshaw, or bicycle, or a pedicab. So, this would not have come before you, and this recommendation that the tour guide ordinance be amended to make it clear that it does not cover this type of activity, because it's not explicit in the ordinance right now. The ordinance, the way it's always been understood and interpreted and thought about is, it is for walking tours. That's why it was created, for people doing walking tours in the historic area, and a number of outside groups other than Colonial Williamsburg wanted to use the public streets for tours, and thus the city created the tour guide ordinance, and again, always with the concept that these would be walking tours. And the concern is that if pedicab operations come in under the tour guide ordinance, that our ability to, either to limit or to enforce regulations, we don't have a structure for doing that now. And that if that were to happen under the current regulatory regime, there would be difficult for the city to provide any control over it. Some of the issues at play, first of all, I guess the key thing is what city council wants to allow and not allow the streets. So, begin where in a sense you want to end up. That's the first question to ask. And then, what system of regulation to accomplish that will work? And that includes ongoing enforcement, so that makes sure it's workable and affordable. With regard to pedicabs in particular, of course, the primary issue to decide is the extent to which the intrusiveness of those vehicles in the historic area is something that is desired or not desired. But beyond that, there are any number of issues, specifications of such vehicles, color, material, design, advertising on the vehicles. Now, of course, you don't see commercial advertising in the historic area, so that's an issue. The method of exchanging money, right now, we're able to deal with this pretty much about, we do not allow exchange of cash on the city streets, except by one of those other methods, such as the farmer's market, is done under the special events permitting. But complicating that is, more and more, you can exchange money now by smartphone and online. And so, how would that work? The line between a tour and transport, very hard to define and to, but it would need to be defined if changes were made. And again, it truly does open the door to all types of other commercial activity and vendors that would say, well, if we're allowing this, why don't we also allow that? So, that has to be considered the issue of precedent. So, for all those reasons, I think it's important to not proceed under the tour guide ordinance on this particular proposal. And if you want to consider any of those other issues, which certainly you may wish to do, that those come back to you, and then we begin to figure out how you want to do that.
Okay. Thanks. So, essentially, as I understand it, this, what this proposed ordinance does is essentially limit walking tours to walking tours, and it sort of specifies that, but then would leave any other activity we want to, for council, if they wanted to consider it, to be considered under another ordinance or another framework.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thanks. Questions, comments?
I have a question from Ms. Shelton. In the ordinance, as I read it, there was no reference to the historic area, but Mr. Tuttle has referenced it several times in his comments. So, my question is, are we talking about something that's going to be dealing specifically with activity within the historic area? Are we talking about behavior or activity that could be undertaken throughout the city?
Well, that would depend on what city council wants to do. The tour guide ordinance is, we don't generally have tours anywhere except Colonial Williamsburg, the streets in Colonial Williamsburg, and the college, which generally the college undertakes. And so, we have thought about it in terms of what happens in the historic area, but the tour guide ordinance applies all over the city.
Right. Did that answer your question? That leaves me in a little bit of a gray spot. I think based on that, it's probably better that I not comment or vote on this issue at this time.
Scott?
I'm in agreement that a loophole is not the best way to proceed with this type of activity, so I definitely understand the logic of limiting a walking tour to a walking tour. But at the same time, I'm very interested in seeing what the possibilities are for allowing this in a very controlled setting, accounting for potential number of, any number of vehicles on the street, or the color of the vehicle, like you said, exchange of money. You know, that's what technology has become much less of an issue as it once was. So, I'm definitely open to looking at this through a, you know, a more specific ordinance, so.
And I agree, and I think cleaning up the ordinance today, as it's been proposed by staff, is a step in the right direction, because there is a potential of a negative impact of too many, you know, of anything going down the historic area, which is obviously something I think we all want to protect, but at the same time, realizing that those are public streets and we should allow for, you know, some commerce to transact there. But there's a balance, and I think we have to, we have to understand what that is and constantly work to protect the historic area. And so, with that, I think I'm okay with kind of what's been proposed and the tour operators, but in a separate conversation, I'd like to start talking about how can we look at some things that are heretofore, or non-traditional types of tours in the historic area, whether, you know, and I think that a pedicab is personally a good idea, you know, it's a unique idea, and I think it's something that, if done right, wouldn't be too intrusive, and wouldn't detract from the overall experience of the historic area.
Ever since Monday's discussion and, I guess, the picture that we had, I've been doing an informal poll at a lot of meetings I've been to, and it's uniformly, we don't want to mess up the historic area with too much clutter. And that's, I hear that over and over from people, you don't want to clutter it up. But something that Mr. Farley said kind of triggered something. The planning commission right now is looking at parking issues in the Arts District, because parking is so difficult in the Arts District. And it struck me that that's a perfect way to get around the Arts District, if you want to do things in the Arts District, is maybe a pedicab. So, maybe outside the historic area, there might be some kind of, some options we could look at for other ways of getting around the city. But in, for this particular thing, of course, we need to close this loophole.
Given this discussion, what I'm hearing is there's enough interest in asking staff to begin to put together sort of what are some areas we might look at, what are the pros and cons, and how might we look at those? Is that one of them? So, Jack, Reed, I guess, and the police chief, all of staff.
We could certainly bring you back some things.
Yeah. Would you begin looking at sort of what, and what's done in other areas, sort of how do they work, what are the pros and cons of that, so that we could at least have an informed discussion about what this might mean, not only for the restored area, but also for other parts of the city, as well as Ms. Newsom suggested? So, I think if you could put that on your already busy worksheet, we'd appreciate coming back with that. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 12-08, my thing just went off, limiting the tour guide ordinance to walking tours.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Farley?
Epstein.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And thank you, staff, for following up on that. The next is the city attorney report, and this is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Williamsburg and Riverside regarding the purchase of Tutter's Neck Dam.
Several months ago, the city was approached by the developers for the Riverside project, and we were informed that there was a contract that they had entered into with the owners of Tutter's Neck Pond to purchase the pond. They made their contract contingent on obtaining an MOU with the city that sort of spells out what their expectations of the city would be with respect to including Tutter's Neck Pond in the development of the Riverside project, specifically as to how Tutter's Neck Pond would fit into the stormwater management plan that they have already submitted and would want to modify as a result of including the pond in that process. Staff has met over the course of the last several months with the developers, and before you is the MOU that the developers and the city staff have agreed upon is appropriate for the city to enter into. And it basically provides that the city is supportive of the plan that Riverside has proposed to include the pond as part of the stormwater management facilities for the development. From the city staff's perspective, it makes a lot of sense, and it's a good amenity for the project. The other thing that Riverside brought up in the course of discussing the MOU is the city's existing dam maintenance agreement with the owners of the pond. That agreement runs with the land, so when the pond is conveyed, should the pond be conveyed as a result of this contract, those obligations will follow the pond and not the existing owners. And so, the city will still have the same obligations that it currently has as those pertain to the maintenance of the dam. So, before you is the agreement that staff and the developers agreed upon, and the staff recommendation is that city council authorize the city manager to execute that MOU. If the MOU, if closing has not occurred on the pond by July 1st, 2012, then the memorandum is of no further effect. So, closing must happen by July 1st.
Got you. Okay. Thank you, Chris. Any questions, comments?
If I'm, maybe Reed, if you could maybe talk about, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was still reading. Go ahead.
All right. Changing, giving Riverside the use of this pond as more dependent on the stormwater management, could that affect the height of the water, depth of the water, and how that might affect the dam today as it is? I mean, if they're going to not use other retention ponds and use this one to a greater extent, would that have an impact on the dam? And I know you're not an engineer, but...
No. I think the, well, if we look at the overall site, while looking at incorporating Tutter's Neck Pond could allow discontinuance of some of the originally planned BMPs around the site, I think they'll still be using low-impact design stormwater management measures, could be porous pavement, could be bio-retention, like we've done at the municipal building expansion. So, there will be other measures used for stormwater management. There could be opportunities where the, there could be some dredging to increase the storage volume of the pond, the water level could be lowered a little bit, so there could be additional storage capability in the pond that would work in context with the whole plan. So, there are a number of options that could take place, and the dam could remain as it is today. But there'll be a lot of work involved... But there'll be a lot of work involved that's ongoing now in looking at revisions to stormwater management master plan for the site.
Thank you. Mr. Friling, I didn't need to...
No, no, Mr. Potts, I welcome you cutting in front of me in line. Ms. Shelton, could you help me understand? The title of what we're talking about is listed as regarding the purchase of Tutter's Neck Dam?
It's regarding the purchase of Tutter's Neck Pond.
So, there's no transference of ownership of the dam?
That was just an error on my part in drafting the memorandum.
So, it's, all those obligations still fall?
They will still fall on the city.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Scott?
For me, and Reed answered this question by saying there's, will be a lot more discussion. But how's the liability scheme going to work out between, say, the purchase happens, between the city and Riverside for how their stormwater management plan could potentially adversely impact the dam? Because, say, due to a design flaw and given a 30-year storm, you have a dam, you know, dam damage, et cetera. I want to better understand that balance.
First, the city will approve the stormwater management plan for the project, so all the impacts, of which there are many, will be taken into account. And certainly, the, we cannot endanger the security of the dam. That would be bad for everyone, especially the city, for our responsibility to maintain it. So, that's, that is one thing, and with all the engineering, that will certainly be taken into account.
I did get one question from a member of the community. Does this change, this purchase change the amount of developable land with this project?
Very slightly, only in that some of those detention ponds, which will no longer be needed, will free up some additional acreage for development or for green space. So, it's not significant, but it, there is some additional land freed up by those ponds not being required. Or I shouldn't call them ponds, I should call them detention BMP facilities.
And essentially, we're using a old BMP, I mean, an old pond to replace a new BMP. So, is there some potential for environmental degradation of the pond itself? And, I mean, I don't...
Well, sure. First of all, the alternative is that the water that, all the water wants to go to that pond.
Sure.
So, you would have to intercept it and put it in a major line and run it around the pond if you were not sending the water where it wants to go. But it's important, too, that you attenuate the flows upstream, because this pond takes water not just from Riverside, it takes water from a large drainage area that's, most of which was developed before there were any stormwater regulations. And all of that water's been going there all these years anyway. So, now, we're going to be able to deal with this pond as a stormwater management device, which in fact, as you just pointed out, it has been, it has actually functioned in that way, but never with any design and never with any maintenance. Now, it's going to have the benefit of that. So, to me, this is a big step forward, not only for the Riverside development, but it's a step forward environmentally. And it just makes good sense to use this facility as part of a, an overall master plan for stormwater in this area.
That's very good, thank you.
But this is really a moving target anyway, isn't it? Because of all the new EPA regulations that are, I mean, we've got a bunch of stuff that's going to be happening before they start developing a lot of this.
Well, most of that deals with stormwater intrusion into the wastewater system, and also, but yes, everything that will be developed here will be in accord with the regulations as they exist today.
So, who knows?
Yeah.
But it also means it's incumbent upon us as we move forward to make sure that sort of whatever designs do not endanger the pond or the dam and basically keep protecting it. So, that burden falls on the city as we move forward in, with Riverside in developing their ultimate plan.
Well, that's true. But that, in any case, when the city approves a stormwater plan for a project, we always have that responsibility, that if it fails and we have approved that engineering, we fail the community. And we should not let that happen in this case or any other.
And just so for public verification, currently, the dam is used as a one-way bridge, you know, for transportation purposes, something the council wanted to maintain. That's true. Speak to whatever might be in this memorandum of understanding to our position on that, maintaining a causeway or passageway, and in addition to the language of the new road, Read Out Road.
The city has a right-of-way over the top of the dam. That's effectively what we bought when we took over the responsibilities we have for dam maintenance from the existing owners some years ago. So, we own a right-of-way across the top of that dam for public use. And it will, according to our comprehensive plan, it will remain open for public use. Currently, it is a one-way road over the top of the dam or at the bridge for, that allows vehicles to go across. Whatever happens with that in the long term, you still have the right-of-way.
But there's mention in the memorandum of understanding that part of this, we're counting on Riverside to developing Read Out Road. And eventually, that's where the traffic would likely be.
Right, and according to our own comprehensive plan now, that the connection from essentially where QuarterPath Crossing is, down Battery Boulevard, and up Read Out Ridge, if, once that is opened up, that would be the alternative to the current accessway across the dam for cars.
And should council decide that it does no longer wish to use QuarterPath Road as a right-of-way, whether it's pedestrian or automobile or any other access, then the city can quitclaim its interest in the right-of-way, and the responsibility of maintaining the dam then reverts back to the owner.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm glad that both parties were able to come to some agreement on this, because I think it strengthens the overall development plan, however it will finally shake out, for the Riverside property. And it avoids down the road what potentially could be a very contentious relationship when things happen, and neither party might be to blame, but it's sometimes easier to assume that the other person has some role in this, as opposed to just sometimes things happen. And now, if it all comes under one level of ownership, we avoid all that. And giving Riverside developers more flexibility to use the pond as an asset or attractive feature, in addition to being stormwater management tool, an attractive feature for the entire development, I think is a win-win situation all around. So, I'm just glad that the parties were able to come, or seemingly will be able to come to some agreement here, and that the city can help make that happen.
With that, Tom, would you take a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we proved that, we authorized the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding between the City of Williamsburg and Riverside Healthcare Association regarding Tutter's Neck Pond.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Potts?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Brings us to our next order of business, which is budget adoption, and there are two parts. First is the budget for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2012, proposed Resolution 12-06. This concludes Schedule A proposed budget, Schedule B local tax levies, and Schedule C capital improvements.
I wasn't going to add anything more to that. If there are any questions on the budget, you have before you the resolution per the discussion on Monday with those amendments, and it's ready for your adoption.
May I say something?
You may.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to disclose that I am an employee of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. On matters coming before council pertaining solely to the property or business of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I have disqualified myself from participation in the discussion or vote because of my employment. I've chosen not to participate in any of the discussion of any specific allocation for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation contained in the budget. However, as the allocation to Colonial Williamsburg constitutes only one line item in the city's budget, and the budget as a whole encompasses far more than this one allocation, and because it further affects every citizen of the City of Williamsburg and not solely the property or business of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I do intend to participate in the consideration and vote on the city's budget. I affirm that I am able to participate and vote in this transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we have talked about this budget for many, many, many hours. I think, you know, we've all looked at a number of changes in the budget, coming from need to finance schools, changes from the Virginia retirement system, changes imposed by the General Assembly and employees picking up 5% of the VRS contribution. We just talked today about employee healthcare. We've talked about the real property tax increase going from 54 to 57 cents, the cigarette tax increasing by five cents. We've talked about sort of various line items in the budget, including particularly funding of tourism. There, we've looked at Colonial Williamsburg and their new program. We also have the Tourism Alliance funding in there. We know that that funding goes for current activities such as shoulder seasons, Arts Month, Christmas, sports marketing, what have you. We also know that there's an ongoing discussion about the relationship between the Williamsburg Area Destination Marketing Committee and the Tourism Alliance. And I think I would feel comfortable if we would ask the Alliance and WIDMAC at some point before our September work session to give us an update on sort of the discussion and where it stands and what that might mean for the future. But given that, I'll turn it over to council for discussion and comments.
Just to add on to that, maybe even before the September work session, before the August 25th City Council retreat would be helpful in case, I don't know that there's anything that we would need to talk about at that point, but in case there are items of interest that we want to pursue in more depth, that would give us a chance to discuss that prior, even to the work session.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with what Paul said, you know, it's just responsible to essentially know what we're buying whenever that, whenever it's known what we're trying to be sold, so...
I concur.
Thanks. Judy?
Just very briefly, there are a couple of tax increases in this budget. Nobody ever wants to increase taxes, and I continue to find it interesting that the state has managed to avoid raising taxes, and many of the localities need to raise taxes. And I think that's, and the problem is because the state is forcing us to do a number of things. So, that's all I want to say.
I might add to that, that I think, you know, this is, we've taken a very conservative approach to this. We've been trying to be very careful in sort of both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. You know, we have talked for hours and hours and hours about sort of the changes we've made. You've heard today about healthcare, but, you know, the refinancing of bonds. You know, we have looked at every nook and cranny in the budget to see where we can cut expenditures and done that before we've turned to the revenue side. This is very conservative. I hope that our expectations for future revenues are exceeded so that we don't have to come back and revisit this. But I think it's important to keep in mind that what we've done is very careful and very conservative in our approach.
May I add to that? I'm not positively inclined to raise the cigarette tax, but I also understand the pressures that we're facing on a number of fronts here, and we need to do what we have to get done in order to pass this budget. But I think it's important that people realize we are being far more conservative on the tax increase side than was recommended by staff. And we're doing that by carrying forward, well, a number of ways, some to additional cost reductions, the revenue adjustments, as you mentioned, but also by carrying forward some additional funds from the current year's budget surplus that normally would go into the reserves fund. That is a practice that we cannot continue, and we should not continue. We're only able to do it now because we have the benefit of the surplus from last year. We don't know how this current budget's going to end up. We could very well find ourselves, because of our very conservative approach to raising these taxes, in an even tighter squeeze or an additional tight squeeze come next year's budget. And that may require us, again, to make similar, to take similar measures to increase the revenues. It's something that none of us wants to do, but we might be put in that position because we haven't raised them as much this year as staff recommended. So, I just think that's important to recognize, that by taking these steps now, we could be, I won't say forcing us, but putting us in a position where we're going to have to do it again. And I think people need to understand that we're going into that with eyes wide open, and we will have to make that choice when the times come, time comes. But there's no great benefit to anyone not to raise taxes simply for the purpose of not raising taxes. It is not an end in of itself. It's something that we don't want to do, but when we don't have another alternative, sometimes it's something we need to do in order to maintain the character of this community. And as Mr. Foster said early on in one of our budget discussions, the city budget is as much about a balance sheet as it is a statement of values for the community. It's what we are saying is important to the people who live here, and it's why we choose to live in Williamsburg and why Williamsburg is a special place. And it's incumbent upon us to be good stewards of that and to keep that going forward. And I think there's been, I know, there's been a tremendous amount of conversation. I think there's been great compromise here. And I just thank staff and all my colleagues for working together in what otherwise could have been a very difficult conversation.
And if I could follow up, because Vice Mayor Friling's really hit it, hit a home run on that comment, because as somebody that's been opposed to raising any taxes, but somebody who's worked with you all and staff on trying to find opportunities for additional revenues and additional savings, it's tough. It's tough to really achieve a zero tax increase because of some of the unfunded mandates from the state, cost of education, there, some could argue we could put pressure on the school board to cut there some more. But I think, you know, everybody, even the school administration, school boards, under the same pressure to make cuts, and they did make cuts. But even with those, there's an increase to us that I think it's important that we fund, and we have to find revenue for that. And I think, and I don't know where we are yet on the personal property tax, but I think if we're committed to leaving it at zero increase and using reserves or surplus pulled forward, I think that's a good decision. I'll say, you know, in terms of cigarette tax, you know, we did just find, if the bonds get preissued at a savings of $30,000 a year, that equals coincidentally what a five-cent increase on tax, on cigarette tax. And so, maybe there's an opportunity to leave cigarette tax with no increase as well, given what we predict in the savings on interest rates. So, anyway, that's just my commentary.
I think if we found $30,000, I'd rather use it somewhere else.
Well, I think what we have before us is a proposed budget that has the real property tax going from 54 to 57 cents, the personal property tax remaining at 350 per hundred dollars, and a cigarette tax increase of five cents. So, I think that's the budget resolution that's before us. Jack, back to the point about the bond refinancing, in looking at the budget, did you take that into account that that might occur?
It wasn't, first of all, the bond refinancing and the funding to pay the bonds off comes from the sales tax fund and the capital improvement fund. So, the savings is in the capital improvement fund. Now, you can do interfund transfers, and ultimately, it all comes out of the same pocket. But it is a savings, not to the operating side, but to the capital side.
And that distinction between operating budget, capital budget, and what is important...
And it's for, it's for that length of time, it's for the seven, eight years till the bond issues.
And again, we've not, in the past... And that distinction between operating budget, capital budget, and what have you is important?
And it's for, it's for that length of time. It's for the seven, eight years till the bond issues.
And again, we've not, in the past, tended to make those types of inner-budget transfers.
No, sir, we haven't either, too.
I would say it's probably not prudent fiscal operation to base your behavior on that.
I agree.
Okay. Any further comments? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the adoption of proposed Resolution 12-06.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Let me just thank council for, you know, this has been a collaborative, important process for us, and thank staff for this. This is, this has not been easy, but I think we've gotten to a good conclusion for the city of Williamsburg and its citizens. So I thank everyone who's participated in this lengthy, lengthy process, and particularly the public for the input they've given. I mean, I think that's been really important, and I think in this process, you've seen council dealing with issues, responding to input, and making changes as we move forward. And again, I have to thank my colleagues on council for a very good process here. So thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, too, we, it's included in the budget resolutions, but we have to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah. This is Part B, proposed water rate of $4.55 per thousand gallons. That's proposed ordinance 12-06.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt proposed ordinance 12-06.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
That brings us to our next order of business, which is unfinished business, Village of Woodshire Apartments in the rental inspection program, proposed ordinance 11-05. Reed?
Before I go over the, this particular case, I have an introduction to make. Matt, if you could stand up, I'd like to introduce to you Matt Westheimer, who was our new Coach Compliance Administrator and has been with us a whole month, so, and things are running very smoothly in the Coach Compliance Division.
Matt, thank you very much for being here and welcome to the Williamsburg family. We really welcome you.
Just a question, so that the audience understands. Matt's taking Mr. Skinner's role with the city.
Correct.
So there's people who are familiar with Stanley Skinner. We can now become familiar with Matt.
We have been talking about Village of Woodshire Apartments since March of last year, and this was brought to council's attention because of a sharp increase in the number of property maintenance and rental property maintenance complaints and the number of follow-up inspections that we had. Great Atlantic Management, who was manager of the property at the time, requested a six-month deferral, which was granted by council, and then effective September 26 of last year, the management responsibilities changed. Management was taken over by the Harbor Group Management Company, so we felt then that the decision should be referred a little bit later to evaluate the effectiveness of the new management company prior to making a final decision. Coach Compliance Administrator Westheimer and combination Inspector John Street have met with the current management team at the Village of Woodshire and have reviewed the complaint and inspection record for 2011 and 2012, which shows that complaints and city inspections have been substantially reduced since 2010, and particularly so far this year, where we've only had two complaints and seven follow-up inspections. So they felt based on the improvement shown, that it is not necessary to add the Village of Woodshire to the rental inspection program. So the staff recommendation is that council not add the Village of Woodshire to the rental inspection program due to improvements to the complaint and inspection record in 2011 and 2012.
Great. Thank you, Reed. What does that mean in terms of the type of action we need to take now? Do we need to take a positive action or just not adding them does that? Maybe that's Ms. Shelton's.
I think to be the most clear, if council agrees with the staff recommendation, you should probably vote down the proposed ordinance, and so there's a clear ending to this because it's been continued on your agenda for a significant period of time.
So we would need to have a motion and second it, but then vote it down as a way of sort of bringing this to a closure?
Can you move just not to approve?
Or you can just move to not.
Just not to, okay, not to approve, okay.
Can I ask Mr. Nestor a question?
Please.
Mr. Nestor, is there any representative here?
I don't believe so. Mr. Westheimer had, they were advised that this was coming up at council this afternoon.
Well, if you would be so kind, you or Mr. Westheimer, just to mention to the management team that this is a remarkable improvement in performance, and I don't mean to speak for anybody else, but I just really appreciate management's efforts to accomplish this, and I hope they are inspired to continue these sorts of efforts going forward because it's certainly to the benefit of all those residents of the city who live in that community and to the city as a whole. So I appreciate their efforts.
Scott?
I agree with it. I think, you know, just the quality of living is important for all residents, no matter where they live, and so for management to have recognized, maybe we forced the recognition on them, but recognize that there were some deficiencies, they addressed them, and by all accounts, I guess the residents are pleased with what's happening over there, and I think that is a positive sign.
Yeah, thank you, Reed, and thank you, staff, for pursuing this. With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council vote not to approve proposed ordinance 11-05.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and the motion is not to approve ordinance. Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We don't have enough of those. New business appointments to boards and commissions, I don't believe there's anything.
Au contraire.
Oh, au contraire, okay, we do have something.
Mr. Mayor, I move effective June 2, 2012, that city council reappoint Dave Arnold to the Peninsula Alcohol Safety Action Program for a term to expire June 30, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
That brings us to our final agenda item for the day, which is open forum, and I have two cards. The first is from David Cramble.
I'm David Cramble from 201 Harrison Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council members, Jack, I am here to just share compliments and throw accolades at everyone in the room, particularly city staff and each of you. I did have one experience that I wanted to share with you. I don't plan to be turning into ashes soon, but my wife and I have been busy trying to pick a family stone for Cedar Grove Cemetery, and I met an individual who said, "You know, you really don't know much about the stones that could be there." And I said, "You're absolutely right, I know nothing." And then he made this statement that I want to share with you. He simply said, "You know, the more information you have, the better will be your decision." So I want to repeat that. The more information we have, the better will be our decision, and that seems to me to be the hallmark of what's gone on since January, and I hope it's, and I expect, and I'm confident it will be, that we'll just keep getting more information so that we can deal with this very uncertain future. And as Paul said, it's a very important responsibility we have to preserve Williamsburg and everything it represents, so I just want to say thank you.
Great, thank you, Dick. I have another speaker card from Greg Granger, but I don't see him here now. Open forum is a time when anyone who wishes to address city council on any matter may do so, so if anyone has anything they'd wish to address council on, please come forward, state your name and address. If not, that brings us to the end of our regular business. Yes?
Good afternoon. My name is Don Carnes. I'm a resident of Pecosa, Virginia, and a member of Pecosa Baptist Church. I'm here today as a Christian and as a citizen of the United States. So I, this past month, I've been out preaching as an evangelist in different cities. I just came back from Boston, Princeton, and Providence, where we preach on the streets, and the police are kind enough to observe our First Amendment rights. But while I was there, I received emails from different people about different, I don't get a newspaper on the road, but I've heard about, I just got back Monday night, that the city of Williamsburg, it was some attempt to make the streets where you can't share your faith or preach the gospel in the streets of Williamsburg. So I'm really concerned about that. My model for preaching would be to, well, Paul is one of my heroes in my life, and the Bible speaks of Paul, it says, "While he was waiting for them in Athens, his spirit was troubled with him for when he saw the city was full of idols. So he reasoned in the synagogue with the Jews and with those who worshiped God, and in the marketplace every day with those who happened to be there." So that's my model. Jesus as well, he went from town to town preaching, and the commission of Jesus was going to preach the gospel to every creature, preaching to every creature. So I wouldn't want to be put in a duck pond, or it wouldn't be a point to preach. He didn't mean go preach to the turtles and the ducks. He meant preach to men who remain in likeness of God. So I'd just like the council and the mayor to consider, you know, protection of First Amendment rights. As I come here, I see a lot of the reenactments, and I, we have freedom of speech, not, if everybody liked what we said, we wouldn't need a First Amendment right, we wouldn't need protection for speech, if everyone liked what we said. And I think when this city was, when this country got its independence, there were speeches that went on that not everyone in town liked it. And I think part of the, far the reason we have freedom of speech in America is because they didn't want to come to a place where you could tell someone you can't speak that on street or something like that. So I'd just like to just, I know there's no vote on this today or anything, but it's obviously going on, it's reported in newspaper that there's a plan to change leasing rights, city authorities, the street, which prohibit this, and I know from pastors, as a preacher comes out here, there are some people who object to the gospel, but at the same time there's homeschool people who bring their children in here. I've talked to a lot of pastors who came here and said, they've been really encouraged. Some pastors say they couldn't even do that in our hometown. And Williamsburg had, in the past, they've observed First Amendment rights. This past year, we had a problem with amplification, and I think we got that resolved. But I would just like to encourage this, all of the mayor and council to consider the First Amendment rights, that this country is based on, the commission of Christians are to share the gospel and preach to every creature. So I'd just like to consider that, and I thank you for your time, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address council? Yes?
My name is Bob Ardidi, and I just wanted to make a comment. I'm thankful, Mr. Mayor, I'm thankful that, you know, you're going to look at pedicab operation within the city, and I just wanted to point out one minor discrepancy in it. My business model, as I told you, was to conduct tours. I really am not focused on, as a transportation company as such. So without being able to conduct tours, I'm forced to change my business model, and I'll be happy to work with the city in any way to make sure that the, if we do develop pedicab ordinance, that it will, you know, be good for the city overall. I just wanted everybody to know that this kind of creates a disconnect for me as far as my business model is concerned. And also, I know the ordinance has already been passed, I just wanted to point out that under the tour guide ordinance, the pedicabs could be, could be controlled in numbers and how they're operating under that tour guide, with additional maybe pedicab ordinance that would define licensing, safety, safety regulations, driver regulations, all those sorts of things that many other towns and localities have instituted. So, and I'm happy to work with the city in any way on that. But I just wanted to point out that little discrepancy. I really wasn't focused on being a transport company. I was focused more on being a premium tour guide company. So I just wanted, again, thank you for your attention on this, and I'll be happy to work with anybody I can.
Yeah, thank you, and I think, as I understood, the intention of the direction to staff is to look at a full range of options. So, I mean, what we did is close the, made the walking tours, a walking tour ordinance, but that doesn't mean there couldn't be other types of tour ordinances as well. So I think that's what we're asking staff to look at, so not only transportation, but just a whole range of issues that deal with those types of, both transportation tours and what have you, that aren't, aren't walking tours.
Oh, okay.
So I think, my hope is you'll continue to communicate with staff as we go forward with this.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Anybody else to speak? If not, I think we have some things for closed session.
We do. Mr. Mayor? I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing two personnel matters per subparagraph 1 concerning employment status and appointments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
That brings us to our next order of business, which is unfinished business, Village of Woodshire Apartments in the rental inspection program, proposed ordinance 11-05. Reed?
Before I go over the, this particular case, I have an introduction to make.